All right. Good evening, everyone. We are so excited you're here and we're very excited to be here. This is a continuation of our 11:00 AM city council meeting, so I'm going to read a little bit into the record. As authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened into closed executive session for the purpose of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any agenda item herein. The City of Rowlett reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session, or call the executive session, or order a business at any time prior to adjournment. I have an opening statement, and then we will start considering the items for consideration tonight, and have here a presentation, and then I will be closing the evening with a closing statement. On March 8th, the City of Rowlett reached an agreement with Bayside Land Partners to acquire the property south of Interstate 30, including the Marina, to enable its development with a future partner. I am thrilled to say that after 144 days, we have now closed on that property. In conjunction with our new development partner, we will be able to hold fast to our commitment to develop a unique destination that Rowlett's citizens deserve. Our new development partner is unavailable this evening, so we will now hear from our Director of Economic Development, Jim Grabenhurst, who will provide information on our shared vision for this incredible lakeside destination development. Jim will also be providing information on Item 2B that we'll be considering tonight, and Item 2C that we will be considering tonight. So, welcome, Jim. We're so glad you're here.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Again, Jim Grabenhurst, Director of Economic Development for the city. It's hard to believe, Mayor, 144 days. There's been a few sleepless nights on the staff side in pulling this project together to get to where we are at today, but I'm excited, as you said, Mayor, that we have reached the point where we have closed on the property. And I'm happy to be in a position to talk about the project with you this evening, as well as announce the project name. So, without further ado, the project name for this property will now be known as Sapphire Bay. Sapphire Bay will be an incredible mixed-use development that will be anchored by a lot of the community amenities and community vision that this city started on, on this journey many years ago. The ownership entity and our development partner is Sapphire Bay Land Development, LLC, being led by Mark English and Kent Donahue. Private equity is being financed by Mark English Capital Holdings, LLC. And as some of you may know, Kent was instrumental in originally establishing the vision and working with the city many years ago, so we are excited that he is back on the team and ready to implement this exciting vision for Sapphire Bay. Mayor, I'd like to talk about the community vision for Sapphire Bay and how it ties to the efforts that this council, as well as many others, have put into getting to this point. So, the amenities that will be included in Sapphire Bay include the Crystal Lagoons as one of the key amenities, a unique island entertainment feature within the Crystal Lagoon that will have a water fountain display as well as video display. There'll be extensive program open and green space throughout the development, including the extensive hike and bike trail system, an amazing hotel and resort and conference center, and an exciting new feature that will be unveiled in the very near future, a surf and beach club. This project will represent over a billion-dollar investment in our community, consisting of 1.4 million square feet of commercial space and over 1,600 residential units. I'm also happy to report that the project team, their project engineer, Manhard Construction, Brian Bridgewater, has submitted the mass grading plan to start the development that is currently under review by city staff. We anticipate that review to take about two weeks, and Sapphire Bay has pledged to be under construction within the next 30 days for this exciting project. Next, Mayor, I'd like to talk about the agreements that led us to this point. As you might expect, a real estate transaction of this size in nature was a very complex transaction. It's hard to believe it's been 144 days, but we have, we're glad we're at the point where we have successfully closed on the property. And so, I'd like to cover the five separate agreements. These are agreements that you all will be considering this evening. But before I start there, I just wanted to pause and see if council had any additional questions about the overview for Sapphire Bay development.
So, Jim, you identified the equity partner and the principals involved in Sapphire Bay LLC. Can you identify the lender involved?
The lender was an Ontario-based lender, Romspen, I believe is how they pronounce their name.
Very good. Thank you. Counsel, any questions on the overall vision development before he goes into the agreements? Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Right. So, the way the deal was structured, there were two separate purchase and sale agreements between the city and the ownership entity, which is Sapphire Bay Land Holdings 1 LLC. There was a purchase and sale agreement for the, primarily the land component, which was approximately 110 acres of the site. And then there was a separate Marina purchase and sale agreement, which consisted of approximately seven acres and all the Marina operations. If you recall from our settlement agreement with Bayside Land Partners, the city's purchase price was roughly $37 million. The simultaneous closing that occurred today transferred title to Sapphire Bay Land Holdings 1 LLC for the land purchase, and Sapphire Bay Marina LLC for the Marina purchase. The purchase price for the land portion was $36.95 million to Sapphire Bay, and the purchase price for the 6.79 acres for the Marina land and operations was $2.15 million. So, the combined purchase price was roughly $39.1 million for the two parcels. The primary difference between the purchase price from Bayside to the city was closing costs, brokerage fees, that make up that roughly $2 million difference between the purchase prices. Primary conditions relative to the purchase and sale agreements specifically on the land, the Crystal Lagoon Technology and License Agreement, one of those items was for the assignment and assumption of that. So, that technology license agreement, in which the bond funds had made payment on, did transfer with the sale, and Crystal Lagoons had consented to that transfer. There were various contracts and obligations that the Bayside party had entered into onto the property. Sapphire Bay was able to review those and identify which contracts they wanted to continue. There was a significant amount of engineering material and work in progress that had been done on the Sapphire Bay property, and that also was assigned as part of the sale transaction that occurred today. And lastly, on the Marina tract, one of the key components on the Marina tract was the compliance with all the inter-local agreement requirements with the City of Dallas, and those requirements were all passed through on the transaction today. One additional note I will point out is the city, in addition to the sale price, the city will be receiving reimbursement for its third-party legal expenses through Lock Lord, and so the city was able to recover all of their legal expenses associated with our third-party attorneys on the litigation. And with that, I'll pause and be happy to answer any questions about the overview of the purchase and sale agreements.
Sorry, Matt, the board's, okay. Councilmember Grubasich?
This kind of goes back to the vision, and I don't think you mentioned it. Can you confirm what the size of the Crystal Lagoon was going to be?
The Crystal Lagoon is being programmed for six and a half acres.
Any other questions, counsel?
All right, Mayor, I'll continue on and talk about the development agreements that you all will be ratifying this evening, consideration for ratification. There were three different development agreements that were entered into between the city and our Sapphire Bay developer. There was a master development agreement and a hotel development agreement. Those two agreements were tied to the land parcel, the 110-acre tract, and the third development agreement was a Marina development agreement that was tied to the Marina tract. On the master development agreement, again, that is between the city and Sapphire Bay Land Holdings 1 LLC. That identifies the overall project vision that I mentioned, commits the developer to make a billion-dollar investment in the project, commits the developer to constructing 1.4 million square feet of commercial space and 1,600 units of residential units on the site. In addition, the master development agreement has an anticipated completion of Phase 1, which I'll talk about here in a minute, no later than December 31st of 2023. They are required to diligently pursue the completion of the project from start to finish. The two parties will be working together to finalize a development schedule for the entire site, no later than December 31st of this year, 2019. In addition to that, the city negotiated a reservation of one acre of property on the south side for future potential public safety facilities that may be needed for the site. And the developer, as I mentioned earlier, is obligated to comply with all the inter-local agreements between the City of Rowlett and City of Dallas. The Phase 1 project contemplated in the master development agreement is primarily focused on all the infrastructure that is needed for the site. In addition to that, it is focused on the amenities that are needed for the site. And so, as Councilmember Grubasich pointed out, on the Crystal Lagoon, that will be a six-and-a-half-acre Crystal Lagoon amenity. There will be an island entertainment feature that provides for a synchronized water and video display. The enhanced shopping and promenade, dining promenade around the Crystal Lagoon will be built as part of the first phase. The major streets and infrastructure, and I don't want to diminish the amount of work associated with the infrastructure to get all the water, sewer, and drainage work to this site, and I'll touch on that in a minute. And then several of the open program space, green spaces, and a big portion of the hike and bike trail system will be built as part of the first phase of the development. The city's obligations associated with the master development agreement are primarily focused with the tools that we had set up early on in this process, which is the tax increment reinvestment zone. And so, there is a project and financing plan associated with the TERs. One of the action items that council will be ratifying this evening is the bifurcation of the TERs into two projects. The property for the north area, north of Interstate 30, will be known as the TERs North property, and this property will be known as the TERs South property. The PID bonds that were sold in 2017 that were specific to this property, south of Interstate 30, those funds will be available to the developer. That fund balance is roughly $23 million for reimbursement of onsite infrastructure and project amenities that I just touched on. Just to back up on the TERs South, the anticipated generation of tax increment over the remaining life of the TERs was capped in our master development agreement at $40.7 million. The off-site public utilities, there are five critical sewer projects and one critical water project for, to be able to develop this property. And those project costs, the city will be contributing up to $13.4 million. So, the city's commitment on those five sewer projects and one water project is capped at $13.4 million. As part of the closing transaction, the city has deposited $3.4 million in escrow to start those projects. So, design is underway for one of the key projects, which is the main line, sewer line into the Garland Treatment Plant. That has already started, and the city will be underway with the other four key projects very quickly. On the water project, it's the main transmission line down Dalrock that will provide the water to the site, and so that is the one critical component of the water service for the south side. And with that, Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions about the overview of the master development agreement.
So, Jim, can you briefly describe how the city is going to recoup the $13.4 million, please? And if you're going to talk about that later, I can wait.
No, that's perfect timing, Mayor. As part of the negotiation on the development agreement, the city will be eligible and first in line to receive reimbursement from the TERs South subaccount. So, there is a reimbursement mechanism in place for the city to recapture that $13.4 million.
Plus interest.
Plus interest. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the overview on the hotel development agreement. Again, this is between the City of Rowlett and Sapphire Bay Land Holdings 1 LLC. This development agreement obligates the parties to work together to develop a funding plan for the construction of the hotel resort with a minimum 450 rooms, the construction of a convention center with a minimum of 70,000 square feet, and the surf and beach club. Again, the development agreement contemplates and has a completion date no later than December 31st of 2023, which is tied to the Phase 1 project that I mentioned earlier. The developer obligation is for the construction of these facilities. As I mentioned, part of the work, the ongoing work that the two parties will continue on is developing the financing plan. City anticipates issuing special revenue bonds associated with the construction of just the convention center facility. I'll remind counsel that in the 85th Texas Legislative Session, the city was successful in securing legislation that allows the city to recapture a significant portion of the state hot tax, which is the hotel occupancy tax, the state sales tax, as well as the state mixed beverage tax for a period of 10 years from the date the hotel convention center opens. In addition to that, the TERs fund will also be part of the funding solution for the construction of the facility. The developer will be solely responsible to fund the private investment for the hotel and resort. At present, we're anticipating the cost of the convention center to be approximately $50 million, and we anticipate the investment in the, the private investment in the hotel resort and the surf and beach club to be approximately $215 million. With that, I'll be happy to stop and answer any questions council may have on the hotel development agreement.
So, Jim, in regards to the city's obligations for the convention center, this is something that was contemplated all along in the original development agreement. The city has to be owner of that property in order to qualify for the state tax rebates. And I'm just kind of informing the public here, too, so. But I just want to highlight, I want to emphasize that the city has only committed to provide revenue bonds where the source of funds comes directly from those sources and not from our general funds and not from our taxpayer dollars.
That is-
Can you confirm that, please?
That is correct, Mayor. And as you mentioned, part of the state legislation that was passed does require the city to own the facility in order to be eligible for rebates from the state for the sales tax, the state portion of the hot tax, and mixed beverage tax.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions on the hotel development agreement?
I'm going to bring up one other thing, Jim, and it kind of relates to both presentations. You keep saying this 2023 date, and I understand that that's the projected Phase 1 completion date. How does that tie into the development of I-30 also, please?
That was a critical component of the conversation, obviously. You know, the last thing that both the city and the developer wanted to do is open a phase of the project and not have access to the project. And so, city has been working very closely with TechDOT and our regional partners to try to time the opening of Sapphire Bay to the completion of the TechDOT I-30 improvements. And so, that was a critical component in the overall discussion to make sure that we timed it as close as possible. Obviously, we continue to work with TechDOT to try to get them to accelerate that timeframe, and our development partner is aware of that. And so, again, the completion date, as I mentioned, is no later than December 31st of 2023. And if we are successful in getting the I-30 improvements accelerated, I'm sure we'll see our development partner accelerate their schedule to try to time the opening as close as possible.
And, folks, that's the completion date of Phase 1. This is a long-term, has always been a long-term project. There's, this is multiple years, over 10, you know, or plus years that this will be developed from this date going forward.
That is correct. And as I mentioned earlier, Mayor, you know, the goal is, you know, now that we've gotten through the last 144 days and all the effort to put this transaction together and all the financing associated with it, the goal will be to spend between now and the end of the year to finalize a overall development schedule, not just for Phase 1, but for future phases as well. And part of that will be the market reaction. We're already hearing very positive things from our development partner as they've gone out to start to gauge market interest in this, and I know that'll be something that we'll be talking about in the near future in your closing statement as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Grubasich?
Well, you just, again, for the public, since I know you kind of went over it on both sides, but again, what constitutes Phase 1 and what their plan is and how to do that, because there was a lot of commercial in there. Then you also mentioned the residential, but if you can talk through what their plan is in terms of what their phasing is and what it, just, again, going over it till it's all together, since we've gone through both agreements now.
Sure. So, primarily, their focus on Phase 1 is going to be all the related infrastructure. So, it'll be the main road system, the water and sewer elements, all the storm drainage. The first thing that they have to do, obviously, in Phase 1 is the mass grading. So, the site currently sits within a flood restriction easement. That's part of why we see quite a bit of dirt stockpiled on the site, and that was one of the solutions that our development partner came up with early on with the Crystal Lagoon and some of the amenities that they're programming, is to be able to generate the dirt on the site to elevate it above the flood restriction easement that City of Dallas has imposed on the property. So, with the grading work and the infrastructure work on the road systems, water and sewer, not just onsite, but as I mentioned, the offsite, five critical sewer projects and one main water project, they will then begin to work on the installation of the Crystal Lagoon, the island entertainment feature, the big portion of the hike and bike trail, the promenade, the entertainment and dining promenade around the Crystal Lagoon, the hotel and resort, the convention center, and the surf and beach club will all be part of what's proposed for Phase 1, and be completed no later than December 31st of 2023.
And I'm sure the public is going, "Surf and beach club? What are you talking about? This is new." I'm going to announce that we're going to have a town hall meeting sometime next week, and the developer's going to come, and I don't want to steal their thunder. They're going to have a presentation. They're going to go into great detail on the Crystal Lagoon, the island feature, and the surf and beach club. So, I just don't want to steal their thunder, but you will get more details about that in the very near future.
All right, counsel, the last development agreement is the Marina Development Agreement. And again, that is between the City of Rowlett and the Sapphire Bay Marina LLC. That is the entity that purchased the Marina asset. And again, on the Marina, they have obligations under the Marina Development Agreement on a six-month timeframe, on the obligations that will be taken care of over the next six months, and then a six-to-36-month timeframe. And so, over the next six months, they're going to start on the engineering and design for the renovations and improvements that they're planning for the existing Marina. They will be working on a temporary road access to the Marina. As you can imagine, once they start the mass grading on the site, they need to continue to provide access to the Marina and the facilities as an operating business. The utilities, as well as the installation of a new public boat ramp and parking spaces in close proximity to that ramp, that will all be accomplished over the next six months. They've got to relocate the dry storage currently that's on the southernmost point of the property. That'll be relocated up to the area that is graded and fenced along Interstate 30, and that'll be a temporary use while the first phase of construction is going on. And the development agreement allows for that use for a maximum of a three-year time period, which ties, you know, fairly closely to the completion of some of the Phase 1 improvements. And then they will be planned to relocate the Marina Ship Store and some of the permanent parking that will be associated with the Marina operation. So, that's what will be happening over the next six-month time period. And then from six months to the next three years, they are going to expand the Marina operations to be able to maximize the number of boat slips that were allowed per the agreement with City of Dallas, and that's 1,005 boat slips. They're going to design and construct Marina facilities, ancillary Marina-related uses, including boat sales, boat maintenance facilities, and then part of the development around the Marina will include retail restaurants and some hospitality. And so, that is part of the Marina Development Agreement that will be completed over the next three-year time period as well. In addition to that, as I mentioned earlier, the development agreement requires our development partner to comply with all the inter-local agreement obligations with City of Dallas, and it continues the concession fee that the city is currently receiving from the Marina operation, which is 5% of the gross revenue on any of the water-based slip rentals that are there. So, that was continued on in the development agreement between the two parties. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Counsel, any questions? The burning question, Jim, will the public have access to the Crystal Lagoon and to the surf and beach club?
Yes, ma'am.
The answer is yes.
Accessible to the public and available to them. And again, you know, I know you mentioned it, we are excited for the town hall meeting and the opportunity for the public to get to see some of the presentation materials. I know I'm a little boring and dry talking about it and not having visuals, but trust me, the weight will be worth it when you see some of the excitement for this project next week.
It'll be more than Blake and I being able to go into the Crystal Lagoon.
I would hope so.
Some people understand that comment. All right. Counsel, any questions? Okay.
All right, Mayor, moving on. The next item I wanted to talk about is the kind of final actions associated with the settlement agreement between the city and Bayside Land Partners. As contemplated in the settlement agreement, there were two actions that the city had to take relative to our TERs district that's in place. It was an amendment to the TERs agreement and an amendment to the project and financing plan, and I just wanted to highlight those amendments that you are considering and ratifying this evening as part of the settlement agreement. As I mentioned before, this primarily divides the projects eligible for reimbursement under the TERs into a north property area and a south property area. It also confirms the current tax increment fund balance, and I will receive that information from our finance department today. The total fund balance in the, the current fund balance in the tax increment fund is As part of the TERs agreement, as mentioned, will be separating those two accounts into a north subaccount, which will capture the increment just for the property north of Interstate 30, for the Bayside property, and the south subaccount, which will capture the increment for the Sapphire Bay development. will capture the increment for the Sapphire Bay development. So the fund balance will be split to $10,211.47 in the north sub-account and $95,920.57 to the TERs South sub-account. The, the agreement also limits reimbursement on the actual ineligible TERs project costs for improvements that are constructed within each of the, of the property areas. For the north area, it caps the reimbursement on all TERs eligible project costs to $10,457,754 plus interest. And on the south TERs property area, it caps the reimbursement, as I mentioned earlier, at $40,778,421 plus eligible interest on any of the TERs project costs. And the final item in the, in the two agreements is the, the TERs. This will terminate all obligations of the Bayside Land Partner Entities under the 2015 Development Agreement and the 2017 Hotel Agreement that the city had in place between the two entities. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about that action item for you this evening.
Counsel, any questions?
Mayor, that concludes my presentation. I know you have a few closing remarks and looking forward to getting the project started and seeing some dirt moving in very near future.
So counsel, I'll give one more opportunity to ask any over-general questions to Jim. Okay. With that being said, I will entertain a motion for item 2B. Councilwoman Brown?
I move that we approve item 2B. To consider an ordinance to approve and ratify the project and financing plan amendment approved by the tax increment reinvestment zone number two, City of Rowlett, Texas, and to authorize the mayor to sign on the city's behalf.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second from Councilwoman Lanning?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Council, any discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote. And that item passes six-zero. The next item up for consideration is item 2C and I'll entertain a motion. Councilman Grubasich?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve, a resolution to approve and ratify the master hotel and Marina development agreement and the land and Marina purchase and sales agreement for the Bayside South land.
And do I have a second from Councilman Cheryl?
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Any discussion, counsel? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. And that item passes six to zero. I guarantee you, Councilwoman Margolis supported this also. He is very sad that he could not be here tonight. All right. So that concludes the formal part of our meeting. I do have a closing statement I would like to make. We will be around afterwards for any questions and I will be announcing a town hall meeting for further discussion. Our goal, first and foremost, has been to facilitate development of this land in a manner that optimizes its value to the citizens of Rowlett. We have been steadfast in upholding our community's vision. This is a one-of-a-kind property and we made a commitment to get it right. And we have. The newly-named Sapphire Bay absolutely accomplishes this goal. With features such as Crystal Lagoon and an island entertainment component with an incredible synchronized water and video show, a resort and conference center, a world-class Marina, and the Surf and Beach Club, Sapphire Bay will become a national destination for conferences, vacationing families, residents for a unique, looking for a unique place to call home, and businesses who want to locate where their employees can live, work, and play. Sapphire Bay will help grow the city's economy through diversification of jobs, housing, tourism, and business opportunities. Sapphire Bay will optimize Rowlett's location on Lake Ray Hubbard and create a distinctive identity while providing amenities long-desired by our residents. We are thrilled to see our community's vision coming to life. In closing, I want to thank many people for getting this project to this stage. First, I want to thank our new development partners, Sapphire Bay Land Holdings One LLC, specifically Principals Mark English and Kent Donahue. Second, I want to thank our Economic Development Director, Jim Grabenhurst, who gave such a great presentation tonight. Thank you, Jim. City Manager, Brian Funderburke, our legal team, City Attorney, David Berman, he's a little tired, and our law, our law, outside law firm, Lock Lord. It was a Herculean task and we are so appreciative of the enormous amount of work and thought that each of you have put into this project. Third, I want to thank my fellow council members for the extraordinary amount of time spent in meetings discussing every aspect of this project. The complexity of this project demanded an astounding level of attention to detail and research and all of you sacrificed time with your families and jobs without complaint. You have truly put the interests of our community ahead of everything else and I cannot thank you enough. Finally, I also want to thank our citizens. They have had to exercise extreme patience over the last six months in order for us to get to this day. As I have already said, we will hold a town hall meeting with our development partner who will unveil detailed plans for Sapphire Bay at 7:00 PM on Thursday, August 8th, at Main Street Events, which is located at 4111 Main Street. This will provide citizens an opportunity to ask questions of staff, the city council, and our development partner. This meeting will also be broadcast live on the City of Rowlett, Texas Facebook page. So you can join on Facebook and make comments on Facebook during the town hall meeting. Please join us next Thursday night as we celebrate our community's vision coming to life. With that, that concludes our meeting tonight. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, city staff. Thank you, Jim. And we are adjourned.